Recording in progress.
Would you lead us in prayer, please?
Lord, we thank you for this beautiful fall day. We thank you for all the many blessings you have given us. We also thank you for all the men and women that work and volunteer for this county and keep them, we ask that you keep them safe. We ask that you continue to bless this county and our leaders. And, Lord, we ask that you forgive us of our sins. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Anyone stand for the pledge?
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That the first call, roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Simpkins?
Here.
Mr. Eby? Mr. McIlwain?
Here.
Mr. Beatty?
Here.
Mr. Dawson?
Here.
Ms. Spicer?
Here.
Mr. Buckner? Mr. Ellis?
Here.
Mr. Petty?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Ms. Hayes?
Here.
Johnny Reed?
I do have a quorum. Commissioner Buckner informed me that he'd be out of town. He'll, we'll see him next in two weeks. Has anybody talked to Commissioner Eby? Anyone has? Alright, thank you. First order of business is approval of amendments to the September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one work, a regular session. Yes, Commissioner Hayes?
Oh, well, I want to make a motion to accept.
Okay.
I also wanted to ask about something that I mean, it said that a road name, uh, uh, speed limit is going to be changed on a road called Swift Road. And it's going to be changed to thirty-five miles an hour. Need to change the name of the road.
Oh, good one.
I don't think that's going to go together.
That's a proper motion, and the fact that you've been gone two weeks and worked on that, that's good stuff.
I told you I'm feeling better.
You are. That's a motion with an asterisk. I have a second. Second by Petty. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of vote with stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item, business committee reports. Any committees report? Hearing none. We'll go into appointments. The first is industrial development board reappointments. These are six-year terms. Ms. Janice Shelton, Mr. Jeff Corley, and Mr. Ed Moore, they are on that board now and wish to be reappointed. I'll open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner McIlwain. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Hayes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote with stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Before we do the library board trustee appointments, we had, there were two reappointments on this, but one individual after, since we had the meeting two weeks ago, has asked not to be reappointed. So I'll be bringing that name to you in November on someone I'm talking to on that. So what we're asking for now is, is the reappointment of Ms. Miki Daniel and the appointment on the open terms from Ms. Dana Ramsey, Ms. Angela Redden, and Ms. Starr Moore. It was Ms. Teresa Fuzzle, thank you. She's asked not to be reappointed, so that's when I'll bring the name back. So there's only four instead of five to do tonight. I'll open the floor for a motion. Motion by Petty, second by Beatty. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor of vote with stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Resolutions, financial reports, all funds except schools. Mr. Hall?
Mayor, I don't have anything to add from two weeks ago. I'll just.
Any questions for Mr. Hall? Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner McIlwain, second by Commissioner Spicer. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote with stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number two, budget amendments, all funds except schools. Mr. Hall?
I do have one item, or two items to add to the amendments from what you were sent Friday. We did get the funds for one point five million on the loan for paving today. The funds came into the trustee's office, and we'd already approved five hundred thousand dollars to transfer from one seventy-one fund over to the highway department. And so I went ahead and moved some of that money of setting in fund balance in one thirty-one to the paving code in highway. So I moved that over to four oh four, which is hot mix, and the one point five million, I went ahead and moved into four oh four hot mix. So that's what you see, what I handed out today, the one point five million and the five hundred thousand setting in fund balance, the two, two million dollars you have right there. So I went ahead and moved those to hot mix. So that wasn't what you received on Friday, but today I went ahead and moved that in there. So I need that to be added to the fund, the amendments today.
Any questions, Mr. Hall? I'll open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Simpkins, second by Commissioner Beatty. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of vote with stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item number three, if there's no objection, I want to move that to last. Item number four, fire truck purchase for volunteer fire. There's a resolution in here that we talked about. This is to buy the fire trucks for, for, by use of the volunteer fire department. The Tennessee municipal bond fund, we only need one point seven five million dollars to do this, but they suggested at no extra cost that we do this at two million in case something pops up before these are delivered. But our intention is only to draw and spend the one point seven five million on this, but that's, they, they went and prepared the resolution this way, and we're fine with it, if y'all are fine with it. Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Dawson, second by Commissioner Spicer. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of vote with stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number five is in here somewhere. This is resolution authorized purchase of real property from Jeffrey Sugg and Cheryl Sugg. It's the five acres in Burns across from the one acre where our convenience center is located. The price on this is two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. This is, look to approve that so we can have a new convenience center built there on property that Dixon County owns. Any questions from myself? Typically, we don't know exact number, but the estimate's around a hundred thousand dollars.
You have to buy the whole five acres. It's listed, it's too far.
It is listed as two parcels, and that's why it's being sold. What we're wanting to do on that is buy the five acres, provide enough space for growth. We also want to make sure we have an appropriate buffer zone between us and the houses on the, to the west of behind this side. Any other questions? Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Spicer. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner McIlwain. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote with stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number six is pay supplement for health department employees. You'll find a resolution in there. It's what we discussed, what we did for our other emergency responders back in early part of the year. This will take care of the individuals that work for the health department. After we got the final list, it ends up being thirty-six people. It's thirty-six thousand dollars. This is coming from the American Rescue Plan money, so it's not coming out of the county's budget. Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Reed, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote with stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number seven is growth and traffic study contract. This is a budgeted item to do the growth study and traffic study along with the city of Dixon, the city of White Bluff, and the city of Burns. The total cost of the plan is about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We, the portion that Dixon County pays for, which is budged, budgeted, is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. We actually budgeted one twenty-five, and it came in a little less than that on our portion. Waiting on the city of Dixon, the other entities to pass this. They think they'll be, have it all passed on their November fifteenth meeting, and we're having a meeting scheduled with the, the people doing the study on Tuesday, the sixteenth of November. But this is to allow, be, sign the contract to go forward with this with the other communities. Motion by Commissioner Williams, have a second. Second by Commissioner Petty. The contract says anywhere from nine months to one year. They plan to start the meetings pretty quickly with community meetings and different stakeholders, so it'll be an ongoing, long-term process, but hopefully this time next year we'll have that completed.
Mayor, was, was it, let's include that we'll have a study for our sewer and water and all that area.
This was more about growth for planning. And, you know, we have the growth plan, the public champion eleven oh one that was done back in the year two thousand. It's going to help redefine that. It's going to give the, the individuals in community have an opportunity to talk about zoning, what they want their community to look like. So water and sewer, it won't directly affect that because those entities do it themselves, the water authority of Dixon County and civil, Tennessee City and Pond and Van Laer. But there's funding available through the state government to help them with that. I think the base funding for Dixon County for water sewers around eight million dollars that is based on the county's population, and then there's a figure above that that's based on need and on competitive grants on that. So we've made all the water authorities aware of that, that it's out there, and hopefully their board directors are moving forward to get something done on that.
Is, is it like, there could be a, like a rezoning of the whole county after this is over, that there would be some rezoning where not?
All, all we're trying to do is put a template together to see what the community wants, then bring it back to each individual government. It'll be up to this board if there's ever a rezoning. The laws will always change. But the idea is just to look at some of these areas of growth and just try to figure out what we want to be, where we want manufacturing, residential, high-density housing, commercial, areas that want to remain ag and things of that type. So we're hoping it'll be a tool that the planning commissions can use to bring back to this board that we can also use as a tool to make some long-term decisions. You know, because I think we all realize there's a lot of angst over growth, some more than others, and we want to make sure that the community has a say in this because some of the things we're dealing with were done twenty, twenty-five years ago. There's our opportunity to lay a template down, trying to think ahead twenty or twenty-five years from now, and not give the community surprises. So hope it's a tool that us in the three municipalities that are working together will use on an ongoing basis. Any other questions? Have a proper motion, a second. If there are no other questions, all in favor of vote with stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number three is the amendment Dixon County zoning resolution, Article Three, general provisions to add traffic study guidelines and Article Eight administration enforcement to add section nine point oh nine one, application for rezoning. Mr. Darnell, is there a presentation you want to make on this, or is there a question?
This will be the final reading out of the public hearing last month.
Alright. Any questions to Commissioner Williams?
I did meet with Mr. Mills, had a Mr. Reagan's office, and there was just three amendments that I would like to offer, and I'm, from what I understand, have to be sent back to the planning commission for their approval. And one is, and I don't know, I can go through them, but, and try to explain some of my theory, but in one G, I was, I just feel like if we're going to write laws and regulations, that we ought to make them as clear as possible, and there's some, there's some language in there that talks about, you know, discretion and different things. And then also, in the next paragraph below that one, I just hate to put a burden on some of these people that want to maybe subdivide, maybe a parcel or two to give to their kids or grandkids to do the assessment. That was, that was another, another one. So there's just a few amendments that, that I would like to put forth. If we could send those back and just, and just ask them. I just think it would be clearer, and it would, I think it would be a better document if, sometimes what you see is if, if I come in to meet with Mr. Darnell, and he, he lays out all of this, and then he says, you're not going to really need this, or this is not required, but if you go to the planning commission and they got discretion, then they could say, hey, you know, we think, think you need this assessment done. And then that person, now they're delayed another six weeks, and they're out a thousand dollars. And there's just a few amendments that I would like to make and ask if we could clarify that. I don't know what the proper motion needs to be, or if, if anybody has any ideas or object, or that's what I would like to put forward.
I'd be glad to look at that. Again, we, we'll keep discussion open here until the commission decides what they want to do. On this, Mr. Reagan, if this is sent back to the planning commission, can you tell us what that process is per rule?
Yes, so this body has the right to make amendments to the zoning resolution on its own. It doesn't require the planning commission's approval, but what the zoning resolution does require is that if this body is going to adopt an amendment or a change, that it has to be reviewed by the planning commission, and you have to receive their recommendation back to it. So in this case, the, the amendment that you have before you originated out of the planning commission, not out of this body. So now that it's come to you with a recommendation, and we've had a public hearing on it, if what you're wanting to do is make amendments to what they've presented to you, then really, I think what the motion would be is to defer action on this for one month until our next regular meeting, and for, that you're asking that the planning commission review and consider these changes that you're proposing in the interim. And with that, Mr. Darnell then would present that at the next planning commission meeting.
The next county commission meeting is going to be on the eighteenth, because the eleventh is better to tell them. So the next county commission election meeting for the planning commission.
Okay, so then you may want to defer action on it until the December meeting to give them plenty of time to be able to consider that. But you have to give them, I think, by the way our zoning resolution is worded, you have to give them the opportunity to review it and respond back. And then if they don't, then you can proceed forward. If they respond back and say, we disagree with your changes, you still have the right at that point to vote, to make those changes to what they've presented, and that's well within your authority to do that. But it does need to go back to them for review and recommendation.
Before, before we move forward then, I appreciate Mr. Williams bringing those amendments up. Does all the commissioners have these amendments that are suggestions?
I don't believe they do.
No, I did, I, I sent it out just to you and, and Mr. Darnell. I, I didn't know if legally I could send stuff to other commissioners, and so I didn't, didn't know if I, if that was going to break some sort of sunshine law for me to send out proposed amendments or not, but.
You can always send out information to your fellow commissioners, you just can't get together and discuss it unless it's an open body, but sharing information. I am correct on that? Don't get in trouble. Some people watch.
And Mayor, I may, I may add here, the amendments to what you have in front of you are not that voluminous. I, I could walk through that very briefly and tell you what it is, and you would know what Mr. Williams is proposing.
I think the body would probably like to hear that because I appreciate the fact that we're taking our time with this. We want to do things, like with the growth plan or the transportation and growth study, is to change it for the better, and I'd rather be slow and right than fast and wrong. So I appreciate you bringing this up. If you would, Mr. Reagan, if there's no objection, commission, if you could walk us through that, I appreciate it.
Alright, so if you have the resolution in front of you that has the proposed amendment to the zoning resolution that the planning commission recommended, I'm going to first point to what is referenced as subsection G that is on the first page of your resolution. And if you go about six or seven lines down to the line that has thirty miles per hour, thirty mph in it, the amendment would be after the thirty miles per hour, and the comma, the word or would be inserted, and then moving forward, any planned unit development, comma, the words or any development, if it is determined as necessary, would be stricken. So you just draw a line through the words or any development, if it is determined as necessary, and then insert the words in order. And so the way that would read then, it would say thirty miles per hour, comma, or any planned unit development, comma, in order to ensure the safety of the public, and then it continues on. So that would be the change in that paragraph that's being proposed. Then if you go to the next paragraph that begins with, in addition to the statement of findings, on the second line of that paragraph, where you see the words zone change, the, the following language would be inserted. After zone change, it would read of a parcel or parcels of real property exceeding five acres. And so that is the, that's the change that Mr. Williams was making to say that it would have to be a larger tract or parcel for it to apply. And then, if you go to the second page, in what is designated as subsection six, and you see that that starts with if the proposed zoning change, you're going to go down to the fourth line and insert the word or at the beginning of that line, so it will say or any planned unit development, comma, and then you're going to strike the words that follow, and here's what's being stricken. Or any development, if determined necessary, to trigger a traffic assessment study as provided in the current traffic impact study guideline. So that language will be taken out. And so the way that paragraph six would read after you make these changes is it's going to, I'll just pick up where you'll be able to see where I'm going. One hundred and fifty or more new traffic stops, comma, or any planned unit development, comma. The applicant shall include such in their prepared statement of findings, so on. So I may have muddied that, but if you, if that's not clear, those are the changes. And so if this body deems that, you know, by majority vote, that you'd like to defer action on this until the regular meeting in December, and that you would like for the planning commission to consider these proposed changes, then that would be the form of the motion to be presented and voted on. Well, it's okay for this body to wait two months. I mean, according to our zoning resolution, the planning commission has thirty days from a proposed change in order to respond. And if they don't respond, then their approval of what you're wanting to do is deemed to have occurred. But in this case, I really don't think that's going to be an issue. If you're presenting what you want, that'll get presented at their next planning commission meeting on November the eighteenth. You should have a recommendation back from them after that meeting when you come here for your December regular meeting.
So we're not under any time constraints to rush this?
No, ma'am.
Brian, that, that first part of that, you're talking about the five acres, that means that, that you're not going to?
Be able to actually subdivide the five acres unless it's, what is, go over that again. I, I didn't.
Right, this is dealing with a zoning change, and it's referring to a zone change of a parcel or parcels of real property exceeding five acres. Keep in mind, there's a whole separate set of issues related to the subdivision regulations, and that falls entirely within the purview of the planning commission. So the planning commission is going to apply the traffic study guidelines to subdivision plats and subdivision applications, and we really don't, as a county commission, get involved in that. But they are required to come to you for an amendment to the zoning resolution. And so in this case, this is talking about zoning changes that are being requested, and how the traffic study guidelines would interplay with any zoning change.
So what you do is actually make an application for roads and, and to fit the property that you're trying to subdivide, right?
I mean, that could be one basis for how they would use the study, yes.
Any other questions before entertain a motion from Mr. Williams? Commissioner Beatty?
And, and I heard all that, and by the time I walk out of here, I'll probably forget it. Could we get some, this, the changes wrote down or emailed where I can look at this one and look at the new one and kind of between now and next meeting?
Sure, those can be emailed out tomorrow. We have them, and so.
Just the change, or, or just the changes?
It's very simple. We'll send that out. It's not a problem. Commissioner Reed?
So we need to move this to give the opportunity for the, this to be looked at, and the planning commission to meet again till the December, I don't know what date it is in December. What, what's the fourth? Anybody want to guess? I think it's December fourth. Thank you. Monday, the twentieth. Is that okay with you? Will that, will that give ample time for planning and zoning? So that's your motion, motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Reed. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote with stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next time, this other business, as Mr. Hall informed me earlier about the borrowing of the one point five million dollars for paving, we have to identify the CTO two five three, that the money has been borrowed, and that's just nothing. Vote on it. Vote on it is a notification. Next item, business approval of notaries. Matt Clark.
Thank you. Kelly Diggle, Jamie Hall, Michelle Lane, Catherine Langford, Kristy Mitchell, Amy Pendergrass, Robin Poole, Jamie Scarlett, Elijah Sutton, Benjamin Vaughn, and Suzanne Weiss.
I have a motion. Motion by Commissioner McIlwain, second by Commissioner Beatty. All in favor of vote was stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Something I should have took about other business, just another informational portion. The settlement with Titan Partners, as we all know, that's been done, that was voted on a long time ago. One of the processes moving forward on that is, is the money that was promised in the settlement, the $400,000 to buy firefighting equipment to be used in that area. That money has been transferred to Dixon County today and is in our bank account. So Mr. Fisher will have an opportunity to shop for the top vehicle we need to help fight fires in that area if we need to. So it's just informational. Any other announcements? Hearing none. And we missed your birthday, Ms. Hayes, but we thought about you.
I just tell you, you know, how you get all these phone calls about extending your car work?
You're on a roll. We're going to get you, we're going to put you on a road show tonight. That's it. Well, if there's no other announcements, the next regular session meeting will be on Monday, November 15th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the Beaufortale Booty Reed Junior County Commission Chamber of the Dixon County Administration Building, Forecourt Square, Charlotte City. Have a motion, second adjourned? Thank you.
Recording stopped.